Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Pull it closer? How's that?
That's perfect.
Perfect. So I'll say it again. Good afternoon, councillors, mayor and councillors. I'll introduce myself. I think you all know me though. I'm Sherry Robertson, Executive Director of Yarmouth Life Skills. And for the past eight years, we've been coming to you for grants and we're very grateful that you have given to us those eight years. Yarmouth Life Skills is a day program for intellectually challenged adults. We're located at 15 Hawthorne Street. Most people know it as the farmer's market building, but we're upstairs. We have 21 participants and eight staff. And we are Monday to Friday, nine to three. Checks in the mail. I love it. And I do want to say thank you because I'm looking around and I see everybody here has supported Life Skills one way or another, not only as a council, but individually. We do shredding. We do confidential shredding. We do confidential shredding. And we have four other micro businesses that we run. We have a snack attack, which we put treat baskets in businesses and charge for that. The clients learn to do some banking and inventory and whatnot. We also make gift tags, which this will be the last year we'll be doing that. And we're looking forward to a new venture. The new one is going to be called Fire Starters. So we're going to be reusing our shredded paper and making fire logs to sell to campgrounds and whatnot. Yep. So, exactly. So we're hoping to have that off the ground shortly so that we're available, we have Fire Starters available for the camping season. I just want to...
Golf courses.
Seventy-five percent of our funding comes from the government. The other 25% we have to fundraise, and that's where the grants come in. And we also do fundraisers. We have two major fundraisers a year. One is the golf scramble that Mr. Mooney mentioned. And that's June 7th. If that's the Saturday, I'm not quite sure if that's the Saturday, it's that weekend. And we just had our first apple pie bake off and we sold $2,000 worth of pies. Six hundred and thirty-two pies.
Awesome.
We handmade. It was a thousand pounds of apples.
I guess councillor Mooney's going to be playing in the golf tournament because I just heard him say "ps."
He's won every most of the year.
And then he says to me, "You're not playing golf." Because that's what my mayor's funded. No problem. Thank you, Sherry.
Is that it?
Yeah.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Sherry, after you made all those apple pies, did you want to have a piece of apple pie afterwards?
No. You know, we made all those apple pies, but we did not eat an apple pie, which is because we didn't want to, you know...
You can't eat the profit, right?
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
Oops. Town and County, Yarmouth Town County Sports Heritage. Welcome, Chuck.
Welcome, Chuck.
Thank you.
Just wonderful. Well, Yarmouth Town and County Sports Heritage, we've been existed now for, I think it's probably about fifteen years. And the main goal is to honor our athletes and builders, to have a place to keep their memories alive. I think it's the big thing for me. And we've done that fairly successful for the last fifteen years. And we want to continue to do that. We've had funding from you folks for probably that many years. And we also get funding from our guile and from Claire. But the major funding comes from you guys. We appreciate everything you've done for us in the past. We are doing, as Phil mentioned, golf. We're trying a golf tournament. We want to have a major funder. And we realize that funds are scarce. We can't keep going to the well all the time. So that's something that we're looking at as being a yearly event. So, and we are also looking at something like three-on-three basketball. We're looking at maybe having street hockey. So we have ideas, ways to raise monies. I mean, for us, the big thing is to maintain our site, to maintain our present museum to, we don't have an individual on site. We had a student last year. We were lucky to get funding from the provincial government for a student. That helps some with marketing. We're hoping again this year, but you never know from year to year with governments. And pretty well, I mean, that's it. We really want to have your support again this year.
You know what? It's good to do the fundraisers, but for me, the fundraisers, they're marketing in themselves. I think it just puts you right out there in the community and it draws attention to you. And so it's a dual purpose and it's a great thing. And those golf tournaments and things like that, they just build.
Right.
And people are excited to go, like they're, well, one is. This one is. But it's good stuff for the community and it really does shed a good light on you, so draws attention to you guys.
Well, we've got the great Phil Mooney helping us with our golf.
Yeah, I was going to mention that last year we had a tournament, or we had a tournament and they came up with the idea, the Sports Hall of Fame. And then they got me involved and it kind of, it didn't fall flat, but we, I think we raised $1,350.
Yeah, it was pretty good for a first...
First year, it's Leo Mooney Memorial Golf Tournament. That's going to be held on May the 8th this year. It was relatively inexpensive for a golf tournament. $125 a team is going to be this year. We made $1,350. And councillor Langel has kindly donated his home for the Friday night before. There's going to be a function there that they're going to sell some, 30 tickets at $50 apiece, which is going to be kind of, the weekend before is going to be the Hall of Fame Supper. Then the next weekend is going to be the Leo Mooney Memorial Golf Tournament with the funds going to the Sports Hall of Fame and a fundraiser at councillor Langel's house, who has kindly donated his premises for a fundraiser. And that should be between the two tournaments, between the fundraiser that night and the golf tournament.
Should help a lot.
Should be in excess of $3,000 for the weekend, which would be a great weekend. And in memory of Uncle Leo, Uncle Leo is one of the greatest persons to go through the lost and found. One of the prizes we gave last year at the golf tournament came under the lost and found. So anybody's missing, anybody's missing a head cover that's got the top off of it, there's a guy, there's a guy in Ontario that's got it now.
I mean, losing a guy like Leo really affected our calendars because, I mean, God, the guy sold $150 himself. He was just a natural salesperson, so...
You got your balance.
That's, that's the other issue with us is...
And you got $4 credit for the next year.
Yeah. That's the other issue with us is membership. I mean, we, I mean, people get inducted and then they settle with that. To get them to be involved is the big issue. You know, they, you know, if we got the number of people that we, that were inducted, involved as members, and then some as board members, we would, you know, we would really be growing in a lot stronger group, I think. But that's the issue and it's the big thing is it's hard to get people to, everybody wants to get inducted. Oh, I'm all enthusiastic. But they don't want to take part as board members or to buy memberships. So that's one of the, that's our biggest challenge.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Chuck, just a question. I want, just want to promote the banquet, the Sports Heritage yearly banquet. That's, can be a fundraiser if everybody attends, that should attend.
Exactly.
You've missed, you mentioned the former inductees and so it's, that's very, very important.
Right. We're continuing that and we have got an amount of funds from that, but it could even, it could even grow and be better. So thank you very much for your support.
Of course, I'm not one to talk today. Thank you. Yarmouth County Agricultural Society. Welcome, Amy.
Good afternoon. And as you know, 2014 was a rough year for the Agricultural Society financially. The society this year not only needs to raise funds to finish paying off our 2014 debts, but we also need to raise money in order to financially be able to hold our 2015 exhibition. Our request today for $2,000 would be used towards hosting the 2015 exhibition. Because without the support of grants, excuse me, the society cannot hold a family affordable event. And the exhibition is one of the few events in Yarmouth that promotes and increases agricultural awareness in an area of Nova Scotia where very little agriculture is in plain sight. Without agriculture, you wouldn't have food on the table and you wouldn't have milk in your glass. And we strive to educate the public, in particular the youth, that attend the exhibition that aren't exposed to this anymore, to those particular topics with animals in the kiddy firm and with different hands-on activities. The exhibition, we also support local businesses, we support local crafters, local musicians, and local charities. And without the exhibition, some of these, some of these people would have to find financial support elsewhere. We hope that town council sees the importance of supporting an event that maintains a balance between agriculture, local culture, heritage events, and family entertainment. The Agricultural Society would like to thank the town for the financial support that you have provided throughout the years, and we hope that you will consider continuing sponsorship, which would allow the Agricultural Society to host the 156 Western Nova Scotia Exhibition this year.
Thank you. How many do you get through the gates?
Twenty thousand.
Go ahead.
Again, I apologize to my colleagues around the table, like a broken record here. Again, I see you have a fair chunk of change being spent on entertainment, and I assume you're hiring some local musicians or Nova Scotia musicians?
Yes.
I don't believe you sent representatives to that funding, that community culture funding meeting at the...
Yeah, I was there.
Oh, good. So a lot of that, you could probably get through that.
Yeah, and I'm going to contact them and see what we can do through them this year and stuff like that.
Good, excellent. Good, good, good. Because that could be a good funding source.
Yeah.
Any more questions? No? Good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yarmouth Shark Scramble. Cancer Society Relay for Life.
Yes.
You're being livestreamed, so you can just introduce yourselves and...
So can I connect my laptop here to the...
Yeah, if you need any help.
That's all right.
Yep.
of Yarmouth today. My name is Mike Muse. I am the district coordinator for the Canadian Cancer Society in southwest Nova Scotia. And this year with me today is Myla Doucette. She is my leadership chair for the Yarmouth Relay for Life organizing committee, and she's one of just many amazing volunteers that are a part of my organization. Two in five Canadians will be diagnosed with cancer at some point in their lives. That is a staggering but true statistic. In 2011, cancer surpassed heart disease as the single largest killer of Canadians taking more lives than stroke, diabetes, liver disease, HIV, AIDS, and pneumonia combined. Every three minutes, another Canadian hears the words, "You have cancer." We, the Canadian Cancer Society, are in the business of creating survivors. We accomplish this through our fundraising efforts across the country, but we do not and cannot make this difference alone. We rely on our communities to support us in every way that they can. And every June, communities across Canada unite and take part in Relay for Life. Is there audio for the computer? Is there audio for the computer?
Just take the microphone and hold it next to you.
Really needs to be conquered. Festival. Courage.
Giving back.
Hope.
Amazing, amazing.
Celebration.
Togetherness.
Memorable.
Fun.
Fun.
Inspiration.
Awesome.
Hopeful.
Very hopeful.
Emotional.
Hopeful.
Sleepless.
Outstanding.
Community and bringing together people for a united cause from a lot of different backgrounds, but all with the same purpose.
Cancer touches everybody.
Everybody has a story about cancer.
It's really nice to see people come together for a really good cause. Really gives you a lot of optimism.
I've lost so many people to it, but then you look, and especially in the morning at the survivor's lab, and you look at all those people that have gone through it, and it's just amazing and it gives you hope and it shows you that all the things that you're doing, it actually does make a difference.
This is a lot of family, different generations. My grandma's 91 and out here every year with us. Got a two-year-old in the family. My kids have grown up with the relay.
Forget the power!
It has been an absolute blast. The weather has been gorgeous and people are friendly. There's awesome food at the card over there. These are how many laps I've done so far. And the shirts might not be big enough.
We walk because we can and we do it because it helps the people.
I think at the end, when you see everyone walk around, all the lights are on, that's kind of the moment.
That's where it makes it all worth it.
Two hundred, $210.
About $1,300.
Today we passed our goal of having a team total of $1,000.
Relay is an event that includes all ages and promotes cancer awareness as a healthy living lifestyle. It's a 12-hour event where teams take the track and are entertained by various local musicians and dancers. This year, we are incorporating a new format where instead of overnight, we're going from noon until midnight. We invite local cancer survivors and celebrate their victories against cancer, remember those who we lost, and we all join together to fight cancer. Relay for Life is a festival-like event and throughout the province, responsible for nearly 42% of all the revenue generated for the Canadian Cancer Society in Nova Scotia. Those funds all help support our many programs and services. Yarmouth alone has contributed over $1.3 million since its first event in 2003, 2004.
Often we hear that money raised for the Canadian Cancer Society does not directly benefit the people living in our communities. The truth is that we are the highest percentage users at 30% of the lodge that gives in the province of Nova Scotia. The lodge is run completely by donor dollars and has a reputation of being a warm and welcoming home away from home. This year, we reached a landmark as we achieved our $15 million campaign goal to double the capacity of the lodge that gives. The expected completion of this new facility is by the end of 2015. At the moment, our lodge is always at full capacity. We unfortunately have to turn people away as we sometimes can be booked for months in advance. With the expansion, we hope to never have to turn anyone away. Something for council to consider, an average stay at the lodge that gives is 17 days. If a cancer patient had to stay at a hotel for the duration of treatment, the average cost he or she would incur, including hotel costs, meals, parking, would be well over
Another big initiative that Relay for Life raises money for, to support and use by people in our community is Camp Good Time. It's a week-long camp for children ages seven to 15 that have undergone cancer treatments. And they're allowed to have a typical camp experience without feeling like they stand
Running a large-scale event costs money, our largest expense being the rental of the Mariner Centre. You'll see in the supporting documents with our application that it uses approximately $5,800 of our fundraising dollars. That amount, if not offset by your generosity, would be very difficult for us to consider. $5,800 equates to roughly 86 nights' stay at the lodge that gives for a cancer patient. We love the Mariner Centre facility, we love the staff, and they have been nothing but wonderful in assisting us in putting together a fantastic event full of local event, public, and participants. However, out of 25 Relay for Life events across the province, most venues are completely donated or rented at a significantly reduced cost. We understand that the Mariner Centre still needs to be self-sustaining. However, receiving a grant from the town would greatly assist us in reducing our event expense. And it, quite frankly, allows for more of the profit to go where it matters most, and that's with the programs and services that our community utilizes every day. So we'd like to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I think you're coming to meet me with me...
I am.
Soon.
Soon.
And the lodge that gives, I didn't know those statistics and I couldn't understand why I received three invitations to that, to that event until I saw the statistics. And when I was there, how often people came to me as the mayor of Yarmouth and just said, "How often are people using?" Like 30%, we are 30% of the whole province. Just, it blew my mind.
Myself, I started with the Canadian Cancer Society as a volunteer, as chairman for the event. And what really motivated me to come on board as an employee is, and one of the most impactful things that has happened to me is visiting the lodge that gives. And it's something that everyone should get the opportunity to do, to see exactly what takes place there.
Councillor Langel?
Yeah, and I think it's incredible. I know many people who've used your facility and your worship's drawing your attention to that staggering number. That's one of the reasons why councillor Mooney and I have been fighting for the last, how long has it been now, Phil? Six years to try to get radiology treatments here in Yarmouth. You know, when you consider the hundreds of thousands of dollars that leave this area to go to Halifax, I mean, and many of our residents don't use the lodge that gives. They don't want to simply because it's not as there, but they feel it's, as poor old Bernie Bronner said this morning, "It's not fair. They have the resources to stay in a hotel or with family," and they do. But it's sad when you consider the number of people from this end of the province that have to go to Halifax for radiology, cancer treatments, when, I don't know why we can't do it here. And on Monday, when we're meeting with Janet Knox, that's the big message to drive home from this council.
Definitely. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And for all the work you do. And I'll see you soon.
Yes, we'll see you.
Roaring Twenties Antique Auto Club. Come on up, because I know you're not shy.
Oh. Would you please tell everyone our budget and budget is working third last year.
How you doing, Dan?
Good.
Good.
Did that check?
Yeah.
Oh, my dear.
Thank you.
Everybody got one? Just one note from last, if you're lucky to see on there, was it Pentecost or more?
Yep. Yeah, that doesn't even touch how many...
I like it.
Are we ready?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you for, thank you very much for the opportunity to expand on our grant application for the plans for the July Car Show to be held during the Seafest celebration. You probably know, my name is Anton Ford, this is Paul Robichaud. We're hold chairs of the, of the event. Dwayne Devoel behind us is the president of the club. And last year was the first time that the car show was held downtown, normally up to the Mariner Centre. And from all reports that we've heard, it was a huge success. We have not heard any negative comments, which is good. This year, we would like to expand and promote it as a family event. Last year, we had approximately 200 cars, which was an increase from 125 to 150 that we have had in the past years. This year, we are aiming for 300. We feel we will draw 4,000 to 5,000 people to the downtown for the Friday evening and Saturday events. Our plan is to have a car parade on Friday evening, followed by a street dance, and Saturday will be the car show. The other events planned are a muscle boil, lobster boil, along with a canteen, face painting, and cotton candy for the kids, and of course, the shopping in the downtown stores for the ladies during the car show. We have contacted other clubs in the Atlantic Province as well as the eastern U.S. to expand our opportunities to attract entrants. The Mustang Club of Nova Scotia has agreed to hold its annual show and shine in conjunction with our show. They need their own separate corral to put their Mustangs in. We feel in order to bring the number of entrance we desire, we need to offer better-than-average incentives, such as prizes and lower hotel rates. We have a semi-captive audience and the fact that all special car enthusiasts like to show off their cars, but in order to get them here, which from the Valley or Bridgewater is 200 cylinders one way, they need an extra incentive. With the help of the merchants in the town of Yarmouth, we feel we can do this. We have a dozen U.S. affiliate members who have attended past shows, and in talking to them, they are very interested in coming this year. Who knows? They might bring a bunch of friends with them and stay around for a few days. The Grand Hotel has agreed to provide special car show entrance rates, and the Nova Star has agreed to special rates, as well as providing a round-trip ticket for two with vehicle to be given as one of the major prize for the entrance. We plan to have five major prizes. Barbecue, welder, this, for the, from the Nova, this trip from the Nova Star, along with a couple others we can get them. The car dealers have agreed to go together to provide an automobile, which every entrant in the car show will have as a chance to win. Details not been finalized, but Doug Thistle is working on it. We are confident that it will happen. And I might mention while I'm speaking that the, the club has grown by six members since the result, totally from the result of the, of the show last year. And we have some good members that were very interested, that wanted to join, which I'm sure will, will be a great act to us and we will feel confident about this year's success. From last year, which was a totally different game for us because we, we found there were some areas that we had to correct and we hope and plan to do those this year. One of the complaints we had was restroom facilities, so we've, we've, we're going to have to, as Paul will relate, we're going to have to rent some porta potties to look after that. And we hope to stretch it out a little while, a little ways this year, from Grand Street to Forest, instead of Parade to Forest. So we need a different speaker system than what we had so that we can keep everybody informed of what's happening the whole way and not just one spot. And we need more advertising, which is expensive, but we need to do it. And we're going to, we plan to print a flyer. Patty's Dirk is doing, looking after that for us and she's got it in the works. And there's a lot of car shows throughout Nova Scotia, about four hours, so that we plan to have this flyer so we can take it, because there's always somebody from here that goes to these and we'll get a lot of support, I'm sure, from that. We hope that it works, and Paul's the money man, and he'll give you some of the breakdown and expenses and things.
I'm not really the money man. Denton is mainly that. As you can see on our list, we have, we're asking for a grant of ten thousand dollars to bring this show to a point that we can, that we can draw the people in here. I think as, as we've been working on this, this project, what it looks like is each year, more people are getting on board with this, and more people from the town, that, that our, the cost will probably be the same, but the revenue will be coming from different sources rather than just from, I think this year, and maybe next somewhat, that we can draw in a lot of cars. We feel that we're doing this for the town, it is not for the old car club. Because it's so easy for us to say, "Well, we'll do it at the Mariner Center, get a hundred and thirty cars, and we're all done." But I think everyone that we talked to, Denton and I went downtown and talked to people after the show, and we heard, like you said, nothing but excellent.
So, I, yeah, I can affirm that one. It was, it was an off-the-chart success. The businesses that I spoke to and that came to me or that I went to see said it was their best day of the year, barring Christmas and everything, their best day of the year. For me, and I've said this to you when I came out to the club, but you know, people just, I'm so tired of the griping ground about the Warfrat Rally, quite frankly, because I think there's a lot of mix-up there, that this can be that. I think it's the beginning of something so big that it just keeps growing and growing and growing. And if last year is any indication, it even sold out of Pamp burgers. I'll flip burgers again for you this year. But, but it was a success, and I think everybody at this table heard the, heard the same thing, that it was, and it belongs downtown. So, thanks. I know you're putting in a lot of work.
Yeah, and all the things that I heard about it, it was a great success, and I'll be supporting you a hundred percent. And the other thing is, Kenny, you got your car registered? You a member of the Antique Car Club?
No, I'm never, I didn't think I could join, so I could probably.
Why not? Oh.
What, what, yours Corvette?
Ninety-eighty.
Eighty Corvette, is that good enough, Paul, or no?
Oh, yeah, you can register it as an antique.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, then you're in.
Somebody said it wasn't old.
Twenty-five years.
You can join our club too.
Yeah.
We got people who don't have a car.
Well, I've got a sixty-six Volkswagen, and that has a new.
Oh, that's awesome. I got a sixty-four Cheval.
Hey.
You gotta tell Joe to get it.
Yeah, I was talking to your husband here while we were going.
Tell him to get moving.
But with this, your worship, and you look at, in almost every organization that came in today, and I don't know how we can do it, but as we're spending a lot of money, and nothing against Larry Hattie, but we're spending a lot of money on P A rentals and system rentals. Now, I don't know if there's a way or.
We need to buy it.
Huge, right?
Huge.
I know, like with the Coal Sheds Festival was last year, was an excess.
Close to ten thousand?
Yeah, ten thousand. Then if you talk about some of the other ones today, you know, just this one, here's a thousand. I don't know what it costs to purchase a good system, but that might be something that we might have to.
Yeah, exactly.
Something we might have to look into, because that seems to be a major cost of this. But if you're looking at four or five thousand people down on Main Street with this Antique Car Show, that's, that's a big, big, big day. And I know everybody was excited about it last year, I hope the weather's good again this year, and I think this is just a stepping stone to better things to come. So Paul and Denton and all the group, Dwayne, thank you very much for the work that you've put into this, and I know it's gonna be a success.
Deputy?
Paul, Paul, excuse me, Paul has already had a phone call from Halifax on the club.
Yeah, Halifax car.
She's only came to her saying that they were planning to come to twenty-five cars.
Proper thing.
That's a new, you know, for us.
They've already booked into the Journey's End. The Journey's End has also given us a very good rate, so things like that, they all, they all help.
Yeah, I know Nova Star's excited too. Like, they're, they're excited because they'll have a whole, a whole thing built around that. But, but I mean, like the special, like the weekend, right? The whole weekend thing, so it's, it's a big deal. Deputy Mayor?
I, I think the best part about it is that as businesses come on board, everybody understands what we're trying to do, so they're, they wanna help. So I think us coming to you this year won't be the same next year, and the next year, and the next year. This is gonna be, I can see it going the other way.
Couple of followers from the States had said, "Well, why, just come for the weekend? We, we planned to come and stay in the area for a few days or a week."
Yeah.
Instead of just coming and going back. So that would help the area.
Exactly.
Denton and Paul, are, are you registered as a charity at all?
We used to be. We was at one time, and I guess over the years, we had dropped that. It was like a fee, twenty-five dollars a year or something.
Sure. Also, we have supplied music on Main Street, is there a way that we could use that as a system to help out? I can, I'm, I'll ask, or we can ask.
Counselor Langford?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I forgot, I lost my phone, I was looting battery power here, so I kinda lost my train of thought for a minute. I was gonna make a comment, and it's gone, so it'll come back.
Good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, one question.
Yes, sir.
When would you let us know if you're gonna do anything?
Well, I can tell you right now, we're gonna do something. I think I can safely say that. Go ahead, CAO.
So, the timing of the process depends on the counselors filling out spreadsheets and getting them back to Linda. As soon as Linda has them, we'll bring it forward, the list to counsel our intention. And we made a change last year to make the grant decision before the end of March, so that organizations such as yourselves know how much money you're getting, and you can plan around that. So, rather than making you wait till June or July, letting you know in March so that...
Yeah. The reason why I ask is that we are gonna be putting out on Facebook and on flyers what we're, we're gonna be giving away, so that everybody can see what, actually what we're gonna be doing for prizes, and it may be the incentives to bring it here.
Yeah. Good. So, so you got the answer to your question? March?
March is, yeah, March is great.
Early March.
Yeah, early March.
Yeah, excellent.
Good. Thank you, gentlemen. Don't forget to talk to Joe, because I gotta get that car signed up.
Just finish me.
Oh, no, they're good. They're funny. They're not here. Wedgeport tuna tournament. Ooh, we're on the next page. This is awesome. Seafood and Wine Extravaganza. That you, Carol?
Oh, okay, I got a second.
You might wanna wait until they're finished their conversation, but you can have a seat.
Have you got the four pairs?
Yeah.
Hello. Hi, Carol. See you, boys.
See you later, guys. See you Friday. I'll check for the road salt.
Welcome, Carol.
Thank you very much for your time today.
I need you to grab the microphone, though, because you're live streaming.
Oh.
Looking fabulous, everything's good.
Oh, now you made me nervous. Okay, so thank you very much for your time today. I'm here representing the Yarmouth Seafood and Wine Extravaganza. I'm sure you've all had time to review the application, but I'd like to draw your attention to one particular section, which is under additional information. Ever since the Seafood and Wine Extravaganza began, which was three years ago, it started as a one-time event and has now morphed into a three-day festival, which we are very proud of. And we do have people that support us each year, which is very notable. Our local superstore is a, is a presenting sponsor, and we're looking this year to have some additional sponsors. With Fisheries and Agriculture, they have supported us from the beginning and are going to continue to support us this year. They have asked us to contact, make contact with Taste of Nova Scotia, because Taste of Nova Scotia has access to the supports through Fisheries and Agriculture. So that is on tap as of now. The big event that we're looking at, hopefully doing, is this year, we would like to include the Nova Scotia Race Boat Organization. They, I've been talking with them, and they feel that the event is large enough that they could use our event on this Community Saturday event, which is where we highlight our service organizations of the town, to come and do a raceboat show for us in the harbor. And by doing that, because the audience would be hopefully large enough, they could use this as one of their competitive shows that they have each year. And with us being able to have, bring the event here, we would therefore be able to be a, some, we would be able to be part of their competitive schedule, which allows them to win and win prizes, and of which we would supply for them for this competitive show. They have been to shows everywhere around Yarmouth. This would be a first. Yarmouth has never had them here before. They, and we had a discussion about the Nova Star, and what they would like also is if the show is, and tides have to be checked, of course, but if the Nova Star is in port at the time, some of the show could be done while the Nova Star is in port, so that people boarding, et cetera, could look out onto the water and see part of the show. The other thing is, they are going to be pretty close to the, they would be pretty close to the Rudder's Wharf, because that's where our event, the Seafood and Wine event is at that time. And when they are off of the water, they would come to the event and be available to talk to people about what they do and about the competitive part of these raceboats. I know that there was, there is another organization in town that was looking at bringing them in, but I don't think that they have gone through with it according to what she has said, because I heard this last year. And we are looking to bring them as another attraction to our seafaring waterfront, and also having it on the Saturday, which is the day that we would have the most, most people available to come and view it. Also, the other addition that we're looking at for this year is on the Sunday event, we always have executive chefs come and do a demonstration. And this year, we're in contact with the Nova Star, and we are going to, he will be one of our celebrity chefs for this year, and that will be at that event. So we, the other thing is, last year, the raceboats did a two-day event for the Warfrat Rally, which was extremely successful for them. And if we did something like a two-day event, of course, naturally, it's gonna cost more money, but it also might be a great thing if we were able to do a split show on Saturday and then a full show on Sunday would be ideal. So, just to bring them here, it's very, very expensive, is seven thousand dollars. It requires, now, of course, they have to travel, they have to bring the people, of course, and it's a direct cost, really, to their club, because they, of course, they have a club that, you know, helps them go around the country, et cetera. They are the number-one raceboat club in Nova Scotia. So they have already received competitive titles, which makes them a great fit for us. And if there's anything that anyone else does not know about the Extravaganza, I would be happy to answer any questions. But the big, the big deal this year is the raceboats.
And there's, there's no way to recoup that.
Pardon me?
You, you can't recoup that.
Not really.
Not because, because it's on the waterfront. I don't know what, how Barrington did it, but...
Yeah, and I don't think that there, that's the intent, if, because there's no, you can't really, you can't charge for that event, because it's open air, and the waterfront is accessible for everyone, so that's part of the reason why it's attractive to us, is that it is accessible for everyone.
Good. Thank you, Carol.
Okay. Anything else?
Good to go. Okay. That was easy.
Hey, that was way easy. Thanks very much for your time.
Early childhood intervention is not here. Okay, the Columbus Club, are they gonna come?
Probably give a presentation for Columbus Club.
Okay, and then Hope, but.
Probably give a...
Someone out there.
Probably give one for Columbus.
Oh, check it out, Jim.
Probably give the Columbus Club one, I want me to do it?
Yeah, I wouldn't do it.
Can I, next time, does he ask Eddie Hickerson to vote for boats? Eddie knows.
Yeah, I talked to Eddie all the time. He, he just, yeah, yeah. And they, they love it. They love it down there. And he's asking me why it's not here.
She can call me at home. I'm watching out. I'm like, I wish I could.
And you gotta remember, Bill, that we had one for water, a couple of years ago, and we gotta have the same eye on line, because if you don't...
Hi, Linda.
There's so many, there's so many...
I think, uh...
Support area, but I think what we should do, we could be a big, a major competitor. We'd rather have your body.
But that's money that's a spare, maybe.
Few years ago, the council considered voting on the issue of the slide.
Certainly.
And we were not prepared for the coal shed. And they actually, there's a, a...
Maybe he's a cop of the back.
He was over here.
Yeah, the only company that's comparable to Nova Scotia is Iberia.
That's not comparable.
There's gonna drop Jerry two-four, seven and stuff.
Put a red car with this.
I just moved you down.
Good, thanks, and yourself?
Excellent.
At least I knew it was friendly.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Oops, loud.
Don't think I'll need it. Oh, is that right? Okay. Didn't realize. Hello, everybody out there in Internet land. Pardon me? Oh, okay, good. That's right, he's not a voting member. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your, your worship. Thank you for, and council members and Linda and Jeff. Uh, thank you for, uh, giving us the opportunity to present about our grant application. Uh, it's the Southwest Early Childhood Intervention Program, and there's just a few slides, a quick slides. Um, although you know who we are, I think, uh, it's a non, we're a nonprofit community organization providing home-based early intervention services for children from birth to six, or school entry with special needs and their families. Uh, it's, uh, founded in 1996, so that's what, 18 years ago, I guess, nineteen now. And, um, we are located at the School of Nursing, but we're moving to the Early Years Center at PA Best and Part of Central School to link up and, uh, provide, uh, you know, integration of our services with the Early Years Center. And the autism chapter's also moving there, and mental health from the hospital's going to set up an office there. So we're trying to build a hub there for families and children in the preschool years. And, uh, uh, we have one staff, uh, member. Valerie Gullison Saretta's our early interventionist and executive director. And we have an office administrator and bookkeeper part-time, Nancy Trefry. Um, and it's governed by a board of directors, a volunteer board, um, a small board. Uh, we are now, we used to be bigger. Um, and, uh, the Department of Education and Early Childhood Development funds the program, but not completely, so we, we have a substantial fundraising obligation, which is why we apply for grants and why we have dinners at Rudder's and silent auctions and so on. Um, although, uh, the news this week, I was in Halifax Tuesday for the minister's announcement and briefing about, uh, the department going to actually fund the program fully in the future, where it's about a, they're doubling the budget up to, from 2.6 to 4, 5.2 million dollars. And, um, over the next two to three years, we hope to not have to, uh, fundraise for the basic core aspects of the program. So it's a home-based, uh, we provide a home-based, uh, family-centered service, focusing on a child's strengths and needs, and collaborate with other communities, and try to deliver a high-quality program through home visiting. We have a three-year-old screening twice a year. Uh, the interventionist accompanies families and visits for clinical appointments like speech therapy or physiotherapy. And we provide parent education and resource and toy lending, library and other supports for children in daycare, preschool, and then their transition to kindergarten, uh, or grade primary, sorry. Oh, I guess I, I'm a little slow on the draw here with the slides. Um, what we do, our core services are developing an individual family service plan, which is the kind of working document that we use to evaluate children's progress. And, um, um, and that, that is a living document in the sense that it's revised every, every couple of weeks and, and is used to, uh, keep track or, as I said, evaluate or be accountable for the things that the interventionist does with the child and family. Uh, there are regular home visits, usually bi-weekly, uh, during the course of the program for the child and parents to work on and attain goals laid out in the Individual Family Service Plan. We facilitate children's inclusion in community programs and services, and particularly their transition into elementary school at age five. So we help most vulnerable children in, in our community. Usually they're children diagnosed with a medical or, uh, a disorder of some sort. Uh, or they have a developmental delay of six months or more in at least two areas of development. And their family's spread around Yarmouth County. And, um, I'll just mention something about that in a minute. Um, I'll come back to that. Uh, why early intervention? Well, as you probably know, uh, the early years are critical in terms of brain development and child development milestones and maturation. Um, a family-centered, home-based support has been shown by the research to have a great impact on, on the child and family, and particularly the child's development. And as this, uh, this economist, James Heckman, uh, noted when he received a Nobel Prize for his work in this area, early interventions are mechanisms to address the inequity in the resources families have to properly develop their children's potential. And finally, um, early intervention makes good economic sense, as research has shown it, for every dollar we spend in the early years, we save $7 over the lifespan of an individual in terms of social, uh, contributions and so on. And the long-term benefits for the community are, as a whole, are even greater than for individual families, uh, because of less need for social services, health services, and so on. And the return on investments made at a younger age are much higher than remedial investments, which, uh, even, even when a child gets into elementary school, if they haven't been involved in early intervention, it becomes really challenging for the teachers and teaching assistants and school staff to help them keep up with their peers. Um, one of the things that we're working on here is that we feel that in Yarmouth County, um, we're just not reaching all the families, so we're going to have a, a really strong campaign this year to bring families in, uh, have open houses at our new center, our new location. Um, for example, right now, we have seven children in the program. We should have at least 15 to 20. If you look at the EDI scores that just were published recently, uh, and we're in, on the radio and paper, newspapers, these are, these are scores that children are assessed in grade primary by their teacher with a device called the EDI. And, um, Early Developmental Index Inventory, I think it stands for. And Yarmouth County, interestingly, had the highest percentage of kids with, uh, difficulties in at least one area of the EDI's measurement. And the average in the province is 25%. One in four kids has a problem on that, according to that screening device. And Yarmouth County was even higher than that. Well, we, we don't have those numbers reflected in our numbers. We, we need to get more families involved. And we're not sure why they're not getting involved, but we're really going to have an active campaign to try and uptake families into the program who've been referred. Dr. Kotur is on our board, for example, and he refers many families, and most of them never call up Valerie. And so we have to, we really have to get after that issue. And particularly in the next year or two, with the Department of Education and Early Childhood Development really bringing early intervention up to a, a world-class level, um, we should be in a position to, to involve many more families than we, we are right now. But, and so whatever resources you help us with this year, we'll definitely go towards trying to bring families into the program. Should we get any resources? I'm being presumptuous. Sorry, did I go over my time limit? Yeah, we're really excited about the new initiative. Um, the, the minister's actually asked me to co-chair a committee to, uh, come up with a new governance structure for early intervention across the whole province. So I was quite honored to be asked to co-chair that with the director of the Early Years Branch, the new branch that was set up in education, in the Education Department. And, uh, it just seems like there's really going to be some exciting developments. Yes, yeah, it is. It's really, I don't know if you've been there, but if you haven't, stop by. Jackie and Holly and the team would be hap, uh, Jamie and Holly and the team would be happy to show you around. And, um, the early intervention programs, we hope will be there in the next couple of weeks. We want to move over, so... Yeah, thank you very much for your time. Any questions, or? Thank you. We really appreciate it. Oh, it's doing, end of slideshow. I guess I can, can I just pull this memory stick out, or? Oops. Many thanks.
So we're back again. It seems hardly that, uh, a year is gone. Just, time flies. I get, actually, last year I wasn't here. I was here the year before. Roger did it on his own last year. He did a fine job. You got your hearing aids turned up, Roger? Things are pretty much the same. Uh, the Knights of Columbus are, are busy. Of course, you're aware, because of the laws of the Knights of Columbus, the Knights of Columbus can't own property, the local councils. That's why it's under Yarmouth Columbus Club. So the board and the members are exactly the same a, as the Knights of Columbus, but we own the building as Yarmouth Columbus Club. We still face the same challenges, um, increasing costs every year, uh, trying to maintain the building, um, fundraising efforts. You just get on a new fundraising effort and it goes great, and someone sees that you're doing good, so they come in and do the same thing, and then you go back downhill again. Our bingos are still continuing as a revenue. Uh, it's been up and down as usual. Challenging now, because we have competition from the reserve, um, which, unlike us, is not regulated, so it's kind of hard to compete against that, but we continue on and we're going to see how that goes. So far, so good. Um, but again, bingo's a thing that the younger generation are not really interested in. There's no bells and whistles, so you don't see all that many young people. I was just saying, not too long ago, I can remember the people like Myrtle Wilson and her sister and the older gang, the place was always full. Well, they're gone, and what we have left is, they're dwindling away too. Um, we started our lottery a few years ago, and that went off with a bang, and then, like anything, it, we tried to do with fundraising, it, it went downhill. So this year, it, it doesn't look as, if it's going to be as good as the past. Um, we continue to help with the Yarmouth Food Bank, uh, the Salvation Army and their Christmas program, because the Salvation Army, their congregation, is dwindling away, and the numbers that they need to man their kettles, um, has gone down. So we've stepped in the last few years, and we help them at the Canadian Tire. And in our, uh, support of that, at the Canadian Tire, we take in some of the highest amounts for them. And then we've also, in the last few years, helped them to put together their boxes. Uh, we provide transportation to church and medical appointments. Uh, we have some members that assist at the veterans, um, veterans at the hospital. Uh, we have the community lunch program that goes, uh, every Tuesday with support from all of the local churches. We support a basketball free throw. We have a drug awareness poster contest. And we sponsor a family skating party every Boxing Day at the, um, at the arena. And we also, uh, on Boxing Day, uh, provide a breakfast for the runners. They have an annual run, some kind of run on Boxing Day, which we prepare the breakfast for them and, uh, charge them a nominal fee so tho, so that they, uh, they can have something to eat after that cold, long run. Um, we also, I don't know if you're aware, we're, we partner with Northwood, um, their emergency call systems. Where we go in and we have some members that install those systems in homes. Uh, and we also go and, uh, necessitate the repairs to those. So that's in partnership with Northwood. We also, uh, provide a major fundraiser now, and this will be, I think, our third year for the Tri-County Pregnancy Center, that we've got involved with them. And last year was the, the biggest amount raised so far. Um, right offhand, I can't remember what it was, but it was in the thousands. And, uh, we're working on that now for April. Um, we also sponsor, uh, marches for the women's rights, for the Jupiter, Juniper House, Yarmouth Special Olympics. We haven't, uh, done anything in the last year, but we have been involved in previous years. Um, one of the big things, uh, our building is a community center. It's used for a lot of fundraising besides ours. There's a lot of fundraising for those that, uh, mainly cancer, patients that are suffering from cancer and, and need help with, uh, fundraising, so we provide our building for that. Um, meetings, weddings, uh, it seems to be that aspect is, is getting busier and busier. So pretty much the same thing, but again, struggling just to make ends meet, to keep the building going, because, as you know, with buildings, the cost just seems to go up and up and up. And we, we see now maybe a little break with the oil going down, but how long is that going to last? And, you know, back up again to the, the same position. So we're hoping that, uh, that you will grant our application for a tax break again this year. And, uh, that's pretty much it. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any.
Phil's giving the dirty look over there. Hey, how dare you? I just wanted to say that your, uh, Northwood program is really good. I know we use it at the house a lot. You guys have come in a couple of times to help my poor old mother with it, and I must say, it's very good. You've got an excellent thing going there for seniors. And, uh, from what I hear, you've got a lot of support in that regard. So, kudos to your group for taking that one on.
Thank you. It's good to hear that someone's taking advantage of it. Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time. Well, you know, there's, we are a charitable organization.
Thirty-five for me, you were before me, so... You know, I, I think if we got to the point of building-wise, if that one's gone, that would probably be our days of buildings.